Does not say six o'clock, as I understand it, it is six o'clock, so we will begin. Welcome everyone to the June 1st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Thank you for joining us. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency or mishap. And now please join me as we salute the Stars and Stripes. Sorry, that was like seriously ear inducing damage.
We'll speak later.
We're not careful. Okay. The first item on tonight's agenda is a new public hearing for Robert Wright. This is an application requesting approval for roof mounted photovoltaic panels. This is located at one Boxwood Court. Who's here to rep-- there you are. Come on up. Could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Robert Wright.
The property owner. Nice to meet you, Mr. Wright.
Good to meet you as well.
So this is a very simple application. It's just approval, site plan approval for putting something on top of your roof. There were some complications because there should be an HOA, there doesn't seem to be an HOA, there might have been an HOA, et cetera, but you thankfully provided all the details to our attorney, Ms. Paul Doro, who opined that we could work this out. Other than that, do you have anything else to add yourself?
No, I'm just thanking you for the approval.[142.01][142.01](Laughter)
Any comments from consultants?
No.
Oh, make it a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any comments from consultants? Any comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have an approval resolution prepared. I believe this will be introduced by Ms. Wasser.
Resolution granting site plan approval, Wright Roof Mounted Solar Panels, June 1st, 2022, Resolution 2022-17. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan approval to the project as depicted on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all escrow.
That's it?
That is all.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Sorry we got you out in this dreadful weather.
No problem, thank you very much.
Enjoy the summer.
You too.
The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing.
Are we going to get a permit, the acknowledgement?
Get tomorrow.
Good luck. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Hyde Park Quick Stop. This is an application for site plan approval and special use permit approval to erect a new convenience store and fueling station located at 4912 Albany Post Road. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome back, Mr. Patrella.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your next submission in the instance, the last one.
Thank you for acknowledging the submission and reviewing it. We really appreciate that. Since we have been here before, I'm not going to go through the whole spiel, but I would like to walk you guys through some of the larger updates, just so that we're all aware. Let me just get into, it's got to be a full screen something or other here. That'll work for now. So some of the bigger items that have come up, we had discussed what kind of sales may be in the front of the convenience store. So speaking with our client, the only thing he'd like to add besides the propane storage cage that is located here on the left bottom corner of the building, also on the right side of the building, he'd like to do outdoor firewood sales. So those would be the only two that he's looking to use at this site. We have also added some more information regarding the sidewalk to the loading door that would be located here on the side. Then we have a curb ramp down, so that would be our loading entrance. We have designated an area, probably larger than need be, but an area where we anticipate doing our condensers because we have an internal cooler, we have, you know, a walk-in, the beverage cooler, and then obviously your HVAC cooling. So we anticipate all our condensers being located on that back wall. The other large update on the site plan is we have eliminated the street trees in the DOT right away. What we have now done instead, and I think there is some precedent for this in the town, we have now included a dry stacked stone wall, similar to, hopefully you're all familiar with what we, our firm had done at the Colonial Plaza or the Dunkin' Donuts there on nine. This is the basically exact same detail. Both walls are currently on, that wall is on the DOT, most of the stone walls along Route 9 are in the DOT right away, so I think that they would be very, we haven't gotten approval from them, I have to, I have to have that caveat, but I do think that they would be acceptable to this. And then we did some low, you know, seasonal flowers and bushes in front of the wall as well to dress up that, that whole thing. Again, I don't see them objecting to that. They're obviously a lot easier to remove if there was some issue, so I think that's preferable to the street trees. The other items, there were some engineering comments along the way that have been resolved. I'm not going to get into all those technical details tonight. On the elevation, it is pretty much what we saw at our last meeting, except now it's formally in the submittal, so now it's included in the submittal package. I have brought physical samples of all the samples that are printed on the page, so I'll leave those with the board. The items that we have included are the mechanical penetration. So we're going to be using concentric vents for the HVAC, which is really nice because all it is is a little four or six inch pipe. So we have a couple of those that shoot out the sides in the back of the building, and then we have some plumbing vents that you'll see. So you can see it's all very, very much moderate. There's no big, you know, roof fence or anything like that for our range hoods and our commercial space. What we're intending on doing is actually coming out as a wall mount instead of a roof mount. And then we'll have, we'll have that powder coated white, so it'll blend right into the trim, and then I don't think that's going to be any kind of eyesore at all. You have seen the updated details previously, but as I mentioned, they're now included in the package. Some of the other items that we've added, just for clarification, there were some comments and concerns on glare from the canopy lighting. So we've added a dashed line just to show the, the soffit construction and the fact that that is a recessed ceiling inside the canopy, just to, just to show that clarity. Biggest change in this submission is lighting. There has obviously been a lot of comments on the lighting. I would like to let the board know that we have, so our original plan, under the canopy, we had an average of 16.2 foot candles. Our newest iteration is down to 14.11 on average strictly under the canopy. We previously actually kind of exceeded the code a little bit. In all the other paved areas, we had 1.06 foot candles average. We've now reduced that to .93, so we're under the one foot candle average on the paved areas. Obviously, if you average the canopy area and the paved areas, we're going to be over one for the site. The number is on there. I don't remember. I want to say it's somewhere near four or five. I, I think I've mentioned in the past, I'd like to point it out again, the Illumination Engineering Society of North America, which is the society that gives these sort of guidelines, does recommend between 15 and 20 foot candles on average below the canopy. Again, we're still below that at 14.11. I know we were looking for a goal of 10, but after commenting with them, this is, they, they actually made us sign something that we're acknowledging, we're below what's recommended, and they don't want to take responsibility for the design. So we're really just trying to, our lighting consultant, Red Leonard Associates, has said that. Now, we feel it's plenty bright enough, and I don't see any safety concerns, but we, we were a little leery of going down to the full 10. So I think that 14 is, is a good middle ground. Most importantly, we were not able to find 3,000 Kelvin lights, so we actually changed the lights that we're using. Same brand, it's just a different format, but they do come in 3,000 Kelvin, so we did get the warm yellow light that we want to see, so we're a lot closer to what the planners and everybody was looking for. And we actually will be special ordering certain lights to make sure that we get them in the 3,000 Kelvin. So all the site lighting did reach that, that color temperature that we were all looking for. And then moving down, just to finalize and touch on that, oh, I actually should point out too, one of the other concerns that was brought up was the diesel pump. It was a little dark, we were under one foot candle at the diesel pump. So what we've done, so we actually omitted a wall pack here on the side of the building. We've added another pole light in the island between the refuse and the diesel light. So we have a pole light here, so now we're hitting like three, four foot candles. Again, we feel, first off, in talking with our client, diesel is rarely, rarely used at night, so it's more of a daytime use. So we, we feel that this is, the fact that it's also located near the building, we feel like this is, this is an okay lighting amount after speaking with him. So just to show you now, we have some updated site maps, so we can kind of see really the, the lit spots, again, security around the building. Now that diesel pump here is lit. We would have preferred to make it brighter, but we didn't want to start bleeding over the property line, so we kind of played with that edge, and that's, you know, kind of really got this area only without, you know, getting anything along the property line. Again, the canopy has gone down just a tiny bit since the last time I showed you. And then just to show you again, the glare, there really isn't any glare. There's no uplight on these fixtures. One of the comments from, I'm not sure if it was planner, or if it was county planner, but asking for the bug ratings on the lights, and bug ratings.
That was county.
That was county. Okay, so bug rating on the light is basically just refers to where that light goes and where it glares. So the B stands for backlight, the U stands for uplight, the G stands for glare. All of our lights are between zero and one, which are the lowest in every single category, except for two lights. Those two lights are wall packs. The backlight on a wall pack is high, but it doesn't matter because it's just hitting the wall. The backlight on the recessed canopies is also very high because it's 360, but again, it's recessed up in the soffits, so backlighting there doesn't really matter. Every single light has an uplight of zero. And then glare, we're between zero and one on every single figure. So just, I think, I think we've really come up and addressed the board's concerns, we've addressed the security at the diesel, we've really kind of brought this down to where I think everybody should be comfortable with it. And I think, you know, again, the, the parts that need to be lit are lit without spilling out of the site. And I think that kind of summarizes our major changes with our recent submittal. Our goal tonight would ultimately be to see if we could get some sort of determination on seeker, but I'm not sure how that would work with where we are with our stormwater. So I guess that's kind of the conversation tonight.
And that's a good conversation for us to have. We do not have, we're still waiting for responses, I believe, from DEC and maybe DOT. I don't think that DOT, there's, you're not going to be, while there will be more traffic here at the site because you have more pumps, you have a larger convenience store, et cetera, I don't think it's going to rise to the level of any mitigation being needed by, required by DOT. This is a state highway, for God's sakes. You're not going to need a left turn lane or any kind of dedicated lane, I don't believe. But we need to wait to hear from them, or at least wait till, I think the 30 days are up now that I think about it.
It has been more than 30. We circulated it.
But I want for Pete to address that when we talk about stormwater as well. By the way, Brendan, you did a great job. You did summarize all the highlights, and I think I can, speaking for all seven of us, when I say this is a beautiful project and many of us can't wait to see it, already built. Let me start over with our consultants, Ms. Franssen.
So, is this someone?
No.
No.
Your lights.
Well, none of them run. Oh, okay.
We had, before you came, we had a really bad sound system problem.
Okay. I will speak very loudly.[826.13][826.13](Laughter) So thank you for the presentation. My comment in particular had to do with the lighting levels. That area of the town is darker, so I did provide to the planning board a, a recommendations and guidelines, information that comes from the Dark Sky Organization, and they do a lot of research as well on lighting levels. Any of these standards are really recommendations, they're not, as far as I know, requirements. I know that the ATM Act, I mentioned this previously.
That's the only one, that's a state law.
Yeah, that's a state law, and the minimum is 10. So from my perspective, you know, Dark Sky was recommending five, you're at 15. I thought that, okay, well, a standard at the state level for something that obviously requires safety and security would be an ATM. From my perspective, again, to balance your needs as well as where you're situated, I believe that 10 foot candles is probably ample, but it's up to the planning board in terms of what they feel comfortable with in terms of the overall illumination. And otherwise, you've really addressed the comments that have been raised from a planning perspective and his own perspective. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Ms. Sotero?
Sure. So most of our, most of our comments had to do with drainage, as you, you know, say. So there, there is currently a corrugated metal pipe that comes through the site from the north, drains property to, to the north, picks up drainage on this site, and then empties onto neighboring property into a DEC wetland. So even though their disturbance is less than an acre, which doesn't require a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, because of the increase in impervious area on their proposed plan, I asked them to do a storm drainage analysis, and they sent me some preliminary information, information by email, which we're going to get in, a report in their next submission. But there was a, a minor increase in drainage, which is expected. And so in one of our earlier letters, I also asked that the section of pipe that goes from their site to the wetland across the neighbor's property, which is an existing old corrugated metal pipe, that that section of pipe be replaced, and they would have to go to the neighbor and ask for an easement. And at the same time, I think they could put wording into the easement that could be reviewed by the attorneys that would allow the neighbor, if they were so like willing, to sign off on accepting the minor increase, you know, in drainage. And it is, it is like minor. So, but as you know, you know, we can't, we can't allow a project to increase the amount of water running off to site after development than currently goes there like today. So, and then also they propose an oil and water separator, which is okay, but we asked them to go a little bit further with that and provide a more, you know, acceptable water quality treatment structure that's more applicable to a gas station. And I suggested in my last memo, a manufacturer that we've, that we've seen used on projects, and that we also used ourselves on a gas station project that we designed in Marlboro that emptied into the DOT system. So, so, you know, I think that as long as they're willing to upgrade the water quality treatment structure, and because the increase in drainage, in my opinion, you know, was minor, that, you know, if the board is so inclined, I wouldn't have a problem with moving ahead with, you know, seeker in terms of, like drainage, there may be other issues that you want to like discuss, but in terms, you know, of drainage, I think we could put enough in there that we could move ahead. And, you know, the seeker determination doesn't have any, anything to do with the neighbor signing off on easement. That's just, you know, an impact, so. So that's really, you know, our comments, you know, two things, and I don't know, I mean, have you, has your applicant, or you guys made contact with the neighbor, or?
Unfortunately, I don't have an update on that. I don't, I don't want to speak for Mr. Delarm, I mean.
He's here.
Oh. Great. Has Harry been in contact with you?
Sorry, a little late.
Come on up, Bob.
Thank you. Okay, so he, we have a letter here from Mr. Delarm.[1164.16][1164.16](Laughter) Surprise guest. That reads, "To the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, this is acknowledgement to allow the above applicant to do the required stormwater drainage as needed." So obviously, we have some legalese that we'll have to work out.
Right.[1178.32][1178.32](Laughter)
But it, it does sound that at least that portion of it is resigned. I did speak with our engineer as well. Thank you so much for showing up. No, I appreciate it.
No penalty for that.[1190.13][1190.13](Laughter)
I'll tell Harry he owes you. So I did speak with our engineer, they're sort of familiar with the, the storm drainage.
Or maybe there's something else besides, you know, like the jellyfish.
Yeah.
That's just something that we've used.
So we're willing to, to put that into the project, so I don't see that as a problem. It's just upgrading. It's an upgrading structure.
It's a great project. It's going to look, it's going to look, you know, beautiful, so.
So.
I'm glad that everybody's working together on this.
It's funny when you said, this won't be an eyesore about something sticking out of the back, I thought, there is no eyesore quality to this whatsoever. Zero. Ms. Moss comments?
No.
Ms. Paul Doro comments?
With the agreement on the drainage pipe, I have no comments.
So.
I mean, we'll need to get a legal document.
Yes, that's.
Acknowledgement that Bob's going to work with.
This would be a stormwater maintenance season of some sort, which you've had, we've seen these, a lot of these over the years.
Yeah.
So let me start to my right, Mr. Gertzio comments?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
First, I'd like to thank you for the stone wall. I think that's a great addition, and it fits in with the character of Hyde Park. And my other comment is regarding the lights. I'm fine with the foot candles where they're at. I think that having a little bit more light in that area, especially with the speed, might, might be helpful for both either pedestrians on the site or, you know, cars that are traveling nine that may not be familiar with the area, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Trained well, Chris. Hit the points exactly like you should.
Tried.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I also, I guess my, my first question before I say that I'm okay with the 14.11 is, I was listening to you describe all the different numbers, and you were, you got it down below 10? Did I hear you say that, that by the, the way you arranged everything, that the average came in below 10 when you tried?
No, 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 the average, there was nothing that's below 10. What I was commenting on is our paved area. So typically, like a paved parking area, you want to hit on an average of one, I think I said.
Yeah, no, that.
If I said 10, I did not mean to, because we are not at 10 on average.
No, no, and you said that your lighting company did not recommend.
Oh, they do not recommend 10. They don't recommend 15, going below the 15, because they're, as lighting designers, Red Leonard Associates, they use, again, as your planner pointed out, there is no state code or law regarding this.
Okay.
So we use other references, you know, other organizations.
Okay.
So they, they, they design to those organizations, and they recommend between 15 and 20.
Okay.
Some of the documents that your planner has provided says that 10 works, but just as our designer has stated, they, they don't feel comfortable going below the 15 or 20, much lower.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the clarification on that. And so I'm also okay with the 14.11 below the canopy. The lighting at the diesel pump, I just had a question, what side, because, could you bring up the picture? Where, what side is the person?
Both.
It's both sides?
So you have to, yeah, it's just like a typical pump, you could pull up on either side.
Okay, and so is the lighting only from the south?
No, so if you look here, they may be difficult to see, but there is a pole light we had for general lighting here, so that's here, this red marker. What we've added is an additional one here and omitted what used to be a wall pack here. So now it's lit from both sides.
Okay.
So you have that security, so the pump doesn't block the light coming from one side or some, you know, a vehicle doesn't block it. You'll, you'll be lit.
Thank you for that. And then my other question is, the sign for the site, currently it's on a big pole and...
Yeah, so, I don't know if I have the signage in this pack.
You did, you did on the elevation.
It's landscaped around it, it's over on the northern, northwest.
Oh, the, yes, yes, on the plan, I have it there, yes. It is not a pole mounted sign, it's a monument sign.
Okay.
It's very, it's going to be very similar to the other, the other gas stations that you have on Route 9, the Speedway, still Speedway or, or whatever.
It is Speedway.
Yeah, they've all, they've all been going down to the monument.
Yeah, so.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. It'll only have LED lit for gas prices, and then everything else will just be a relief sign that has down lighting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
Yes, thanks. Thanks so much for all the changes you've made. I agree exactly with Chris Oliver's comments, so thank you, look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Yeah, no, beautiful. Looks great, and thank you for the wall in the front, because I think that's also a safety feature.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, a big safety feature compared to what's there now. You just drive, you could drive into oblivion.
The clear pavement.
Yeah, exactly. So everything is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I concur with my colleagues. I think the lighting plan is wonderful, and I appreciate the changes you've made. It's, it's going to be a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I get to come in at the end and say, I agree with my colleagues as well, and I'm so happy that they are being generous with the lighting. I do want to point out one thing, in the Greenway Guides, which, the lighting, I am going to just say straight up, it's dated. I mean, they're still talking about metal halide and sodium vapor bulbs. But that noted, what they recommend is that it's, that we, all planning boards look at the overall average of the site, so that there may be hotspots in certain sections, but what is the overall average? And if I wrote things down correctly, you're, you have a .93 average around all the paved areas, the 14.11 under the canopy, I'm going to guess that that's going to get you down to 1.5 or something, because you have a lot more paved area than you do just under the canopy.
I actually have that number here.
It's, I know it's somewhere, because I've seen it, maybe it's.
It's on the chart. It's in this chart here, but I just can't read it, so let me make that a little bigger. You guys got to get like Adobe Acrobat on this thing, I can't work with this. Red browser.[1567.23][1567.23](Laughter) All right, so what we're at, average, it's, it's a little higher, it's 5.3 is what it ends up being on an average. It's a weighted average.
For the total site?
Yeah, for the total site. Again, the cam area. Canopy area does, you know, increases it.
So at any rate, I, I think I'm okay as well, although generally speaking, that's, I'm going to say that's tempered by the fact that you've got the lower Kelvins in there too, so it's not as harsh a light.
That was one of the things that they, not to interrupt you, I apologize.
No, no.
But the Red Leonard Associates, again, the lighting engineer, said the other reason they are concerned about going below 15 foot candles is, we perceive 3,000 Kelvin light, that color temperature, as darker.
You do.
So it, he says that that is something to consider, and I, I meant to bring that up.
No, that's, like I said, when you said you went below that, that's why I thought, okay, then the foot candle being higher should still be okay, because it's a softer, darker, darker nominally light. I do think the stone wall is a great addition. I've said it before and I'll say it again, we love working with your firm because you sort of understand, you created the Hyde Park look in some ways, I'll put it that way.
Ah, I like that.
So first, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? If there is no one, then before we adjourn, what I suggest we do is, can we put this on the agenda, not as a public hearing, but just for, on the 15th, to consider seeker determination? That way the ZBA can also consider taking action at their next meeting?
Assuming we get some comments back, yes, and the drainage is resolved.
Well, you know, I think as long as we can get like a response from you guys that you're going to do an enhanced water quality treatment unit versus the oil and water separator, and then I would like to see, although I've seen it in like an email, I think that you should submit the drainage, you know, report and, you know, the conclusions and the numbers and all that, so we have it on file before we do seeker determination.
Okay, so if we can get you the report, just at least some comment from the engineer that we are upgrading the.
Yeah, and the report, I don't, you know, we don't need anything fancy, it's basically just a pre and, a pre and post like development. You know, it can, you know, it can be simple. And then the other thing is, I don't, I'm not concerned about moving ahead with seeker, I don't think we've heard anything from the Department of Transportation, which is not like surprising, but, but I don't have a problem with it, because, I mean, it's a gas station gas station now, yeah, there'll be a little more increase in traffic.
I tried to say, but this is a state highway with a speed-
You know, it's wide open there, there's plenty of site-
There's not going to be a requirement for this to have its own dedicated turn lane.
So, you know, for seeker purposes, you know, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
But, but before we get around to conditional site plan approval, we do want at least, and I can help you out if you're having trouble getting a hold of them.
I think, again, my, my goal really is just to try to get a seeker determination before the next ZB, I mean, we have to get our variances-
Yeah, you got to go ZBA, right.
Right, that's, that's really my goal, I'm not looking for, I don't think that we'll in the next meeting have, be ready for conditional approval necessarily.
I mean, you have a lot of agencies, you're still, haven't submitted to the County Department, Department of Health yet?
Uh, no, I don't believe they have submitted the final subject, so-
Yeah, so we should really, we should wait on conditional site plan until you get a little, a little further along with the DOH and the DEC, you know, and all that, because just in case something, something, something changes, then we got to re-review the stuff, so.
No, again, our only goal is, is to try to get seeker done, that's-
Brendan, when, when would you like to us to adjourn this public hearing, too?
If we can act on seeker-
We don't have to have a public hearing for them, so we'll put you on just for that to be, yeah, for the 15th.
Just for that, oh, so then our next, our next public hearing, I would say then, could be-
End of July, middle of July.
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine, I think, yeah, that should give us ample time to get to a point where-
There's a second meeting in July.
Yeah.
Yep. So, make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to July 20th?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Yeah, because basically, we're pretty close to being conditional, but we want to make sure that we don't have unforeseen circumstances blow up with Department of Health or DOT. I don't think Department of Health, I don't think DOT.
And then the variances.
And then either, well, obviously, that's why we need to do seeker, so, we'll put this, we'll slate this in for the 15th and see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delarm.
Thank you so much.
Braving the elements to come in and make, make it all happen.
Leave me here.
The next item on the agenda is Cranston, these are the, also the photovoltaic panels, we're still awaiting a new set of plans with, to show screening. I know that in, I don't know if all of you have seen it, but that we've been emailing with the applicant's representatives, and they actually have relocated the array a little bit, it's now closer into that retaining wall, so that they don't think they have to have to the bollards, because there's now much more room for cars, but I haven't seen this, they've just sort of told us this, so, at any rate, the applicants are not here tonight, because they believe that they're going to finally have the new plans to submit sometime in the next week, was that correct, Cynthia?
Yes, I believe, I believe Ben and Mary are having some health issues, which is July.
And, do you recall when they wanted us to adjourn this, too?
Um, the 15th, they said they're going to get me in-
That's what I thought, so it's just going to be in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, make it a motion to reopen the public, wait, is this a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, reopen the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any comments from consultants? No, or the board? Nope. Would anyone like to speak about this application in the audience? Nope, make it a motion to adjourn this to June 15th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation for a site plan waiver, again, for roof-mounted photovoltaic panels, this is located at 53 Garden Street, which is in the statewide area, scenic area statewide significance district, but we routinely grant waivers for these kinds of applications, anybody have any questions on this?
No.
Then we have a resolution prepared, and I believe Vice Chair Dexter is going to introduce this.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Justin and Danielle Bowman on 53 Garden Street, site plan waiver, resolution number 2022-22, whereas a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Justin and Danielle Bowman to install roof-mounted photovoltaic panels on the existing single-family home, and whereas, 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 therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive[1740.25]